All the meetings are ordered and we have, come on up. We want you, we're embarrassed, you're gonna be embarrassed, we'll just go right off the front here.
And your name is?
Uh, Garrett Ball.
Hey, good. Garrett, yeah. Uh, we'd like to lead us, pledge allegiance. What's up?
Hold on. May I have more victims? There's three.
Hey, for me, check if you feel.
Did I say some?
Alright, let's just get on. Great. Well, I believe, I pledge allegiance to this flag, the African state of, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And, and here before we just generally, we're gonna do some just been, I business presented by the president, we want to thank you and your team for just doing such a fantastic job. Originally, this started out as beating poor questions, we were really happy, and uh, I prepared to get mayor's key to switch jerseys because Jim had the report jersey. He didn't do that, because we didn't have an official, but so we want to thank you guys for beating poor, that was really good, and moving all the way to the state, you guys did a great job and did our village honors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Please let the uh, notes, uh, note, uh, all the trustees department has some officials present for the meeting permit. Uh, over to number three, uh, minutes approval of the November sixth, twenty twenty-three village board meeting. And file the April fifth, twenty twenty-three joint architectural review board, parks and recreation board meeting. The August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three joint library board. October second, twenty twenty-three finance committee. The October ninth, twenty twenty-three board of public works. The October eleventh, twenty twenty-three architectural review board, meeting minutes as presented, I'll need a motion in a second. Second, give a motion in second, any corrections, additions, changes noted in the minutes? None heard, um, we'll take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, but that motion carries. Is there anybody in the audience who requests to be heard? On, on agenda item or an agenda item? Yes, sir. If you'd like to stand up here and come up to the microphone, please.
Am I speaking at the right time?
What, what, what would you like to speak on?
I wanted to speak on what I spoke about two weeks ago.
Okay, um, you have two minutes, you can go ahead.
That's it?
Hmm?
Two minutes?
You have two minutes to speak on, uh, on an agenda, on an agenda or an agenda item. You have two minutes.
Nobody here.
I'm sorry, I, you know, you have, you have the opportunity to speak at a public meeting, what would you like to say, sir?
I, I wanted to follow up with what happened two weeks ago.
You, I needed address again.
Eric Meckelberg, one five three eight Iroquois Avenue.
Good.
I spoke to you about the low income housing going in. None of the residents were notified. Followed up with Mrs. Wolf, she called me one or two days later. I wasn't satisfied because it was just basically reiterating what I basically said two weeks ago. And by the time all I basically said was, you don't put a whole group of people, no matter what color, whatever it is, into the suburbs, the way you guys are doing it. And they said, well, we don't discriminate in Grafton, however, you don't put pedophiles next to a school. And in a, uh, low income, there is no discrimination, so you can have criminals in there. And by doing that, it is possible you are mixing the criminal element with the people that all have autism. Now, I was told by the, that the impact seven, the group that's running it, is going to basically run security and stuff over there. So I don't know. My feeling is that this was done under deception. It was originally, like I told you before, it was planned for the autism people and the college students. And then somewhere in between, they revised it, put the low income housing in. This is where it starts, you don't do that. And I, I, I'm just, I'm not satisfied because even a phone call, it probably would have been done if I would have been able to finish saying what I was saying, but instead I got it, I had to be cut short, oh, I gotta go, I gotta go, click, that's it, that's the end of it. How is it? You come to a board meeting, you're only allowed two minutes to speak, you go on a phone call, they rush off when it's not what you people want to hear, what the citizens are saying. And I just, um, I think this was done by deception, we did not get notified, I asked many neighbors, nobody knows nothing. What, whatever you guys did, I don't know who voted for it, but when you sent me to talk to the person that was supposed to cure whatever I, my thoughts were, basically what you guys were doing is sending me to the person that created the problem. It's not right, you would, I don't know who voted for this. I don't know who voted for this, but I don't know how you guys would allow a big project like that. And if you don't think, like, right now, there's a certain amount of police, there's a certain amount of firefighters, you don't think you're gonna be needing more, you're probably gonna be needing more by default. Just because you're putting in different elements.
Gone like three and a half minutes, okay, and, and, and I, I don't want to be rude, we cannot discuss this issue here. Um, because it's not part of what is acceptable under our meeting rules, so again, I had Mel, Ms. Wolf reach out to you. Um, we will certainly, as a group, think about this, at this point in time, we, there can be no action or discussion on this item per our, um, per our meeting, Mike, any comment on that at all?
Yes. It's just that it's a public, it's a chance for the public to make a comment, this hasn't been placed on an agenda, so your neighbors and impact seven aren't even aware that they should be here, so that's why we shouldn't speak on it.
So what do I have to do then?
Well, you've, you've alerted us to an issue, the village board has the right to be able to say this is something that we want to bring up to discuss. Um, that I'm sure that I'll hear from other village board members if that's what they wish to do, bring it up on your agenda, but that's as much as I'm going to discuss it at this point in time.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, there's no, uh, business that's presented outside of what's been presented at this point in time on the agenda, board of resolutions, action items, resolution adopting the twenty twenty-four annual budget programs and adopting the twenty twenty-three tax levy. Um, this is a resolution which will need an offer, a motion in a second with any final discussion. Need a motion in a second? Okay, we have an offer motion in second, um, we need, uh, just a quick heads up that, uh, uh, the discussion that was made at half the public uh, hearing was law, was noted in the village board minutes, so that those are official comments at this point in time, are there any other discussion of this before we go to a vote? On the budget?
To find the names.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, that's what, I mean, we all made, all made comments last week, which is fine, if you want to make an additional comment, that's fine. Yes.
So, um, just to let you know that for the comments that I made before, three reasons that I don't feel that I can vote for this budget are the same as before. Um, I don't agree to vote for budget that we don't really know the cost share yet for the SRO, you know, we haven't, I know we're gonna be in conversations with the school board about that, but, um, that's not gonna vote for me. Um, the other, uh, issue was, I didn't like the fact that the fire department tax levy was decreased. Um, I don't know if that money, I know that they got another grant and that's great, but I don't know what that extra money went to. Um, and then the other reason was the, how the new position came in to aim for the park and rec. Um, I don't feel that the park and rec was given all the information.
Thank you, Lisa.
Laura. And just, uh, to comment in addition to what I mentioned, uh, two weeks ago, now that we have some preliminary numbers related to the fire and EMS track record, I still remain uncomfortable with regards for, with additional road projects, I certainly sus- um, support the need to be working on our roads, but there's a little too much there for my taste regarding spiraling into high interest.
Amy?
Yeah, yes, I have a question to the, uh, attachment number one. This is pertaining, I think, to primarily the fire department work. There's a, is there an added position, a new position being created? To be down there?
What are we speaking of?
Okay. We have a question.
Heard that?
Uh, no.
Didn't? Okay, so, uh, at this point in time, uh, we don't, offer a motion in second. To vote on the budget, I want to see if you say aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Uh, raise your hands for the name. Motion carries four and three. Alright, we'll go to report of finance.
Alright, uh, first item, uh, being brought forward to the village board for consideration is a recommendation to approve a, um, loan out of the revolving loan program for BSG Lounge at thirteen oh seven Wisconsin Avenue in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars with the conditions listed. Um, joining us online this evening is, uh, Kathleen Schilling from Ozaki Economic Development. Ozaki Economic Development is the administrative, um, arm of our revolving loan, um, uh, um, fund. Uh, that said, um, OED helps us with the vetting of any applications and provides background and recommendations. That said, a recommendation of approval with conditions listed, uh, in the memo that was attached to the report of finance. Um, highlights of that, um, of those conditions rather, um, not going through them individually, but some highlights thereof, noting that it's specifically a seventy-five thousand dollar loan, noting other loans from other sources. Um, also noting that it is a ten-year term and amortization with an interest rate of four point two five percent. Uh, there's an initial six-month deferral of principal payments, so interest only. Um, proceeds must be drawn within a six-month period, and that an automatic payment system be established, um, whereby it would be an automatic draw to ensure timely payments towards the, uh, loan. Um, there is a, um, employment condition as well as far as creation of FTEs, um, and, um, also providing statements, um, with regards to, um, business performance, um, so that's a summary of the conditions that are attached per the recommendation of, um, OED. And as I mentioned, uh, um, Kathleen Schelling is with us this evening, who can speak to, um, OED's recommendation even further if the board wishes.
Okay, for a motion to approve a loan for BSG Lounge at thirteen oh seven Wisconsin Avenue in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars with condition listed, I need a motion in a second. Motion to approve. The motion in a second, any discussion questions? No questions at this point in time, we have motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Item number two, motions reclassified by engineering tech position, on a tech one position, pay grade fourteen back to crew position in pay grade thirteen, Jesse.
Yes, uh, as I, uh, mentioned, uh, with a previous discussion this evening, um, we had created this position, um, earlier this year with the hopes of, um, being able to achieve, um, two functions within one job position, being able to split time in engineering, surveying, inspection, but also helping fulfill some DPW crew person, um, responsibilities as well. Um, that said, unfortunately, through several attempts, we were unable to, uh, have a successful recruitment for a qualified candidate. Um, the long and short of it, of it, of what we're hearing is that folks that have that engineering background want to be an engineer, they don't want to drive dump truck as well or work on a concrete crew as well, they want to do that engineering function. Um, therefore, this is, uh, looking to reclassify this existing position, um, back to its original placement as a crew person. Um, this is not the creation of a new position, um, this is a reclassification of an existing position as it was originally when we changed it to tech one, we are now reverting it back to crew person in the lower and appropriate pay grade.
Alright, motion to reclassify engineering tech one position in pay grade fourteen back to crew person position in pay grade thirteen, I need a motion in second.
I'll move to approve.
Good motion in second, any further discussion on this? Alright, no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Item number three, motion to approve an extension in the intergovernmental agreement for fire department oversight and fire inspection support with SOC bill conditioned upon the acceptance by SOC bill village board based on the draft agreement extension. See that, uh, we have, uh, quite a few, uh, yellows in here.
We do.
Being changed.
Sure, I can walk through those updates, so the base document is the previous year's document. The highlighted items are those that have been changed. So starting on page one of the agreement, that one, two, three, that fourth, whereas simply calls out, um, that we are looking to consolidate operations in twenty twenty-five, basically cementing the fact this is intended to be a one-year, um, um, extension. Flipping back to page three, paragraph seven. Um, this, uh, A, B, and D are updated payment terms whereby SOC bill is paying the village of Grafton for services rendered, these are updated terms. Um, what previous, uh, what previously was four hundred dollars for, per week for chief's services, three hundred dollars per week for assistant chief's services, those are both upped by fifty dollars respectively. But then the administrative support in that subparagraph D is being upped from ninety-three dollars and change up to one hundred and eight dollars per week payable to the village. It was brought to my attention that this base document, um, through the course of the review by the chief and the village of SOC bill, that paragraph C, uh, may need updating, with that, I would, uh, defer to, um, Chief Rice to discuss, um, what his thoughts are on that paragraph.
Thank you. This morning at our, uh, staff meeting here today, I'm reviewing this document that you're looking at, and as the administrator pointed out, C brought my attention that in your reg- original presentation.
Uh, Chief Rice, uh, C, which number, please?
Seven C.
Thank you, Chief.
Almost, today, you know, it almost stands out by its lack of highlight, that's what caught my attention with the morning of our meeting. Uh, when I, I felt that since there was no increase last year in what SOC bill pays for Grafton, we kind of put that off, knowing we're almost at consolidation, knowing that it wasn't going to happen again for a little while, I thought two thousand twenty-four, what we're talking about here, was the time to get an increase. Increase for the village of Grafton, to get a little more revenue from SOC bill for everything we're doing for them, and also a small increase for the assistant fire chief and myself, for the time we put, so we put in a fair amount of nights and weekends there also. Uh, I had made a recommendation to the village administrator, it was about a month later that he was putting all this data together to present to you, and, and I believe it fell through the cracks there. Uh, so my, what my full intention was from day one, was that the assistant fire chief, the fire chief would receive an extra twenty-five dollars per week in two thousand twenty-four. And that comes out to twenty, that comes out to thirteen hundred each, so a total of twenty-six hundred dollars in the added revenue that we're getting this year from SOC bill, so we're getting an increase of six thousand seventy, uh, next year. Uh, with those increases of twenty-five dollars a week to the fire chief and the assistant chief, uh, the village still has seen an increase of three thousand four hundred and seven. So if it's, uh, appropriate, I'm just asking that you consider that, that that was, uh, I believe accidentally left out, and then you consider the additional twenty-five dollars per week to the fire chief and the assistant chief, and I will close by saying, as you look at page three of the documents, it can get a little confusing because the A, B, and C are written, uh, per week, where C is per pay period, which is every other B. So I myself get confused, I think I may have confused Jesse a little bit, and I think that's how it felt through the cracks.
So Chief, just a, a quick question for you, so will we be looking at the village of Grafton through payroll system, till by weekly compensate the fire chief in the amount of five to twenty-five?
It's a pay period, so it's five.
Five fifty.
Five fifteen, five fifteen.
And five hundred for the assistant chief.
Okay, five fifteen and five hundred, okay. I has, have we notified SOC bill of this? On SOC bill, it's just on.
Yes, well. Make sure, knowing that we're gonna overview week two tonight, and she explained that it's not of her business what, how we're spending the money in the videos.
Okay.
They have no, uh, comment.
Very good, thank you, Chief, thanks for bringing that to our attention, Jesse, anything else to add on this, because I don't believe there is, we have a motion in a second to bring it to this.
Nope, the other highlighted items, just simply, um, uh, speak to updated dates being the terms, January one twenty-four through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, updating, the parties have executed this agreement in twenty twenty-three, um, and then the appendix that is, um, attached, simply reiterates in table form those numbers, um, set forth in paragraph seven on page three. Being SOC bill's payments to us.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I'll, thanks for not bringing yourself, but, uh, let's, let's bring this to table.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
The amended.
Yes.
So that would be the motion with the amended, Jesse?
Yes.
Okay, and discussion here.
Um, just if we have C read, it's not clear, so if you're going forward, can we say per week, just like everyone's have? You paid out then?
It, it would actually be easiest because that item C speaks to our payroll system, and we pay bi-weekly, which is why the nuance in the language. Um, that way it is abundantly clear as to how payroll needs to process that stipend payment for, um, the chief and assistant chief. Um, that, I, I would argue for clarity with regards to internal operations, um, it, it should read the same, obviously with the updated numbers, but that's, that's why it's written that way versus when we invoice, um, SOC bill and get those payments from SOC bill, it, two different processes.
He scheduled for financial services provided to the village. Fire chief oversight, fire inspections, administrative clerical support, for a total of forty-seven thousand and change is a deal. Um, for SOC bill, I mean, I'm sure they know that, I'm sure they're grateful, you couldn't get, you know, half a fire chief for that, I just, you don't want to point that out, that I think that that's regarded as a deal, and I think.
Any others?
Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion, table with the amended, um, seven C. For the path. That would be in the village of Grafton through his payable assistance, shall bi-weekly compensate the fire chief in the amount of five hundred fifty dollars, assistant chief in the amount of five hundred dollars for services rendered, under disagreement on behalf of the village of SOC bill. Right, motion in second, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alright, let's go to the board of public works.
Um, I would actually request the village board consider taking these items together as they are very similar in nature. The three items coming forward out of the board of public works are adopting individual resolutions, um, accepting the dedication of, um, various pu- infrastructure to become public infrastructure. This is infrastructure that has been installed by a private developer, inspected by the village. Um, it meets our standards, we have signed off on it, the punch lists have been either fully completed or to the extent practical completed. Um, and therefore, we are in a position to look to formally accept this infrastructure as public infrastructure, therefore, it will come into our ownership. This is all part of the, um, process of development, um, and each of these resolutions are very similar in nature. The first one applying to Blue Stem subdivision, the second one applying to Shady Hollow Phase Four, so a particular phase of a subdivision. Um, and then the third item, uh, Phase Two of Riverbend Meadows, um, but again, it, they do all, each of those resolutions speaks specifically to accepting infrastructure as publicly owned.
I'd be okay with that, so, uh, we'd be looking for, for the board here, to make a motion to recommend, uh, maybe to the village, uh, pardon me, motion to recommend to the village board adopt resolution accepting dedication of sanitary sewer, water main storm sewer, asphalt roadway, curb and gutter, and sidewalk of the final flats of the entire Blue Stem subdivision, village of Grafton, Ozaki County, Wisconsin. Then puts motion to recommend to the village board to adopt a resolution accepting dedication of sanitary sewer, water main storm sewer, asphalt roadway, curb and gutter, and sidewalk on the final flat of Shady Hollow Phase Four subdivision, village of Grafton, Ozaki County, Wisconsin. Motion to recommend village board adopt resolution accepting the dedication of sanitary sewer, water main storm sewer, curb and gutter, sidewalk and roadway of final flat of Riverbend Meadows subdivision, Phase Two, village of Grafton, Ozaki County, Wisconsin, need a motion in a second.
Mr. President, I would ask an offer a motion a second as a resolutions, please.
Okay, alright, I apologize, offer. Motion. Second.
Second.
You know, offer a motion in second, all in favor say aye. Aye. I'm motion carried. Alright, preliminary fire EMS consolidation together.
Yes.
Before we start on this, I want to make it really clear that, um, this was public information that did make it all on the, uh, onto our webpage as part of our, um, as part of our, uh, meeting, I want to make sure we're really clear here that the FY twenty twenty-five cost estimate on personnel, I want to make sure that everybody's aware that's a maximum amount, that's eight grades. Uh, that I want to make sure we're really clear that nobody's getting raises this year or next year, it's basically a way for us to figure out how we tend, uh, budget for this in the worst case scenario, uh, in twenty twenty-five for the refer, not the budget, excuse me, for the referendum. Uh, there was some concern coming from two of the towns and, uh, also SOC bill, that, uh, this might create some problems as people think that they're gonna be getting raises right away, uh, but it's not.
Correct, it's not.
Thank you.
Certainly, thank you for that clarification, um, so really, I'd like to start with an overall, um, notion for what I'm about to present. The overall notion of what we're pursuing here through the working group and by presenting these numbers is the ability for a consolidation of Grafton and SOC bill fire departments into one department that can provide reliable and sustainable twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five ambulance coverage primarily, and fire coverage as well. They can roll an ambulance anytime, day or night, throughout the year, because of a staffing model that we're looking at and the numbers associated with that staffing model, so that is the end goal here, is that reliable, consistent coverage, both fire and EMS. That said, um, over the past several years, working group of both Grafton and SOC bill representatives have a meeting regularly, regularly to discuss what a consolidation could look like. Um, and, and then how does that take shape and what are some of the cost figures associated with that? This, um, topic goes back to a twenty twenty-one Public Policy Forum report that noted there are, that there could be efficient, efficient and effective advantages to consolidation, um, for the purposes of fire protection and EMS services among communities. Those communities being, uh, village of Grafton, village of SOC bill, and then our associated, um, townships, being township of SOC bill and township of Grafton. So I will walk through my explanations of each of the attachments, um, and then, um, kind of close up with what kind of impacts that, um, where, where we sit today, what, what the idea or, or, um, proposal looks like today and what that means as far as an average tax bill among the different stakeholders. So attachment one. So attachment one um, sets forth a proposed organizational chart. And the associated costs to operate the department as well as contribution for capital expenses. We really look to be all encompassing with this table and attachment one. Again, not only does it set forth an organizational chart that covers um. Over the course of various shifts over three days, um, but then it gets into benefit costs. How much you could net out of the benefit cost because not all paid-on-call folks are eligible for benefits. Um, what you'd be um, estimating for overtime and holiday pay, training. Miscellaneous startup costs like liability insurance, software purchases, legal expenses, et cetera. Uh, workers' compensation insurance, long-term disability. Um, with that, the proposal um, that is right here today. Sets forth a maximum salary figure for the various um. Ja- uh, job positions within the um, within the proposed consolidated department, ranging from. Um, the ones highlighted in green are existing and in place. The ones that are not highlighted um, would look to, would look to be um, created as part of that consolidated department. And then what types of schedules they would be working. That said, the supervisory structure of this um, proposed organizational chart would be fire chief, deputy chief. Captains and then lieutenants. So really the captains are those day-to-day leaders that answer up to the deputy chief and fire chief. The lieutenants are also those day-to-day leaders answering up to the captains. This structure looks to provide some growth and upward mobility from uh, firefighter, paramedic. To lieutenant, to captain, deputy chief, fire chief, so on. So it provides some growth opportunity as well. And then again, the associated um, um, salaries. Um, maximum salaries associated with each of the positions. So with those full-time positions, the paid-on-call staff remains, and that's a pretty important facet of this um, proposal. We're not looking to move away from. We don't believe it is necessary to move away from it, and frankly, we need that paid-on-call support. Um, that said, paid-on-call remains as part of this structure and is uh, allocated accordingly. So with that, total staffing wages being the full-time folks and the paid-on-call folks. Comes in at about two point seven million dollars across the two stations being Grafton and Sockville. Benefits, we took uh, thirty-eight percent being FICA, Medicare, health, dental, life insurance. Wisconsin retirement system contributions. Um, as you recall, um, these folks are considered protected employees. They're in that protected class. Therefore, there is a higher amount of Wisconsin retirement liability associated with those positions. Or the majority of those positions. The business manager does not fall within that class. That would be a standard Wisconsin retirement. But again, to try to apply this across an organizational chart. Um, that comes up to about a million dollars worth of benefits. However, we want to net out about one hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Worth of benefits because not all paid-on-call staff are going to be eligible for benefits. Um, basically to be eligible for Wisconsin retirement, you have to cross the threshold of twelve hundred hours worked in a year. Not all paid-on-call members do that. There are some quote-unquote rock stars that respond to anything and everything as paid-on-call status. They do reach that eligibility threshold and we are then obligated as an employer to uh, make those Wisconsin retirement system um. Payments. Overtime and holiday pay, training, uh, the miscellaneous startup are, are brought forward uh, through Chief Rice's um. Um, due diligence as are those maximum wage rates listed up in the table. Um, Chief Rice did a lot of due diligence in um, helping to formulate that organizational chart. As well as those uh, cost estimates with regards to the wage rates. The miscellaneous startup costs, really I look to model um, what we carry here in Grafton as far as our cost. Of various software packages, our cost of liability insurance, um, a portion of legal services. And that is the source of that one hundred and ten thousand dollar figure. Workers' compensation insurance, that was calculated out. It is based upon payroll and I utilized the village's calculation, applied it to the um, staffing. Um, uh, staffing wages and came up with that nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollar uh, figure. Long-term disability is similarly based upon village numbers. So breaking that out, we've got. Um, with wages and benefits and those startup costs, we're looking at. Uh, three point nine seven million dollars. Operating costs that eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollar figure. Come into play with regards to utilizing Grafton's operational budget and Sockville's operational budget, not staffing strictly. Uh, uh, operational being um, supplies, utilities, um. Uh, um, parts and pieces, so on and so forth. So those operating costs. Costs are a combination of Grafton's and Sockville's and we calculate out to that eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar number. The capital costs, that four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar figure. Is an annual allocation to the department among all of the stakeholders to total that. And then the approach would be basically that can either be saved up over time. To apply towards one large purchase used as uh, smaller capital purchases with managed debt service for larger purpose. Uh, larger um, projects and/or equipment. So that is an allocation that the working group is brought forward with regards to capital costs over a period of time. It would be an ongoing um, contribution, very similar to what the village of Grafton does right now with our contribution. In the fire department's equipment, uh, um, capital equipment fund, but on a li- on a larger scale as it is a larger department. So that being said, brings me down to that bottom number that highlighted in yellow, the total estimated startup cost in twenty twenty-five. For consolidated fire and EMS department is about five point three million dollars. What does that translate to? That translates to um, wanting to share these costs among um, stakeholder communities. Um, that said, the stakeholder communities would be again, villages of Grafton and Sockville and the towns of Grafton and Sockville. So to really generate a, a equitable cost share in, in the working group's eyes. We really looked to the North Shore Fire Department as well as the Western Lakes Fire District. That's out towards Delafield, Oconomowoc area. Um, with that, we took a um, simplified approach, um, which really mimics closer to the Western Lakes. Um, but it is the basis for the North Shore Fire Department cost share formula where really. That five point three million dollars of total cost is broken apart into thirds and then. Weighted by population, equalized value and calls for service among the stakeholder communities. So for, for example, a third of that five point three million dollar total cost is one point. We'll call it one point seven seven million dollars, okay? By population, the village of Grafton among the stakeholders has fifty-five percent of the total population of the stakeholders. Therefore, that portion of the cost share calculates out to nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. That works very similarly for the other areas in which the cost share is broken apart to be shared amongst the stakeholders. Again, it's population, equalized value, that's set by the state of Wisconsin. It is again meant to equalize. Values across all municipalities. So instead of assessed valuation where those can vary greatly. It uh, the equalized value is being utilized um, by the state of Wisconsin and then calls for service. So moving down into that bottom table. This is how the estimated cost share breaks out for each of the um, individual stakeholders. So of that five point three million dollar total cost. Approximately three million dollars of that would be uh, the village of Grafton's share. Nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of that five point three million would be the town of Grafton's share. Nine hundred and twenty-six, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of that five point three million would be. Sockville's, the village of Sockville's share and then three hundred and eighty-one thousand for the town of Sockville. So that would be what our cost share looks like. That um, orangish, pinkish salmon, uh, whatever fancy color you wish to call that. To the right-hand side of that table, that column shows what the twenty twenty-four budgets for each of the municipalities show. What we're paying today for fire EMS services. So the cost share total for a consolidated department would be just over three million dollars for the village of Grafton. For twenty twenty-four, we're paying one point five eight million dollars. So. Knowing that, keeping that in mind, flipping the page. We get into a larger purple colored table, which compares and contrasts what each of the village. Or what each of the municipalities will be paying in twenty twenty-four for fire and EMS. Then, how does that compare to what the cost share of that new department as proposed with additional staffing? And capital contributions and whatnot, what that is, what's the difference? And this is important because what this does, that difference number would be the targeted amount of funding. That each municipality would need to achieve moving forward. So in the village of Grafton's case. In twenty twenty-four, we're going to be paying one point five eight million for fire and EMS services. The cost share in twenty twenty-five would be just over three million. So that means the village would have to generate an additional one point four seven eight million dollars. As part of the cost share for that consolidated department. So that one point four seven eight million dollars or simple rounding, just for easy discussion sake, one point five million dollars. That would be our referendum target. Because that is what we would have to bring in above and beyond our ability to tax levy right now. In order to achieve funding for a um, fully consolidated um, and increased staff. Um, fire and EMS department. Now, before I go any further, that again, we'll just say one point five. It's one four seven eight oh seven two. But for conversation sake, that one point five, setting that to referendum. Playing this out is approved by the voters, fingers crossed. In perpetuity then, moving forward, that is the village of Grafton's minimum contribution towards that. Newly created department, that one point five million dollars. Because that is what we achieved and obtained through a referendum. So what that amount sets is the minimum bar. That does not say it can't grow. That doesn't say um, um, it can vary. That doesn't put any other limitations other than the fact that that one point four seven eight million dollars. That we would look to achieve through a referendum is the very minimum we would uh, pay towards. That said, there are the costs involved and that is broken out earlier in my discussion. So it would go above and beyond that, but that is. The assistance we need in order to achieve our ability to afford that cost share figure. So with that being said, that one, one million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seventy-two dollar target, if you will, for referendum. Flipping the page, I translated that out into what does that mean to the impact of the average home? And their property tax bill here in the village of Grafton. Per our um, village assessor, the average single-family home value in the village of Grafton is two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So, well, I'll walk you through the mathematics of it to reach what it means to an adjustment to an average homes tax bill. For twenty twenty-five. So as I mentioned, the village would seek the ability to obtain an additional. One million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand and seventy-two dollars of tax levy. We divide that by the overall assessed valuation of the village. And that provides us with a property tax rate because you have your target amount of what you want to gain or collect. By the assessed value, because again, we use assessed, school district uses equalize. And that equates out to a tax rate. So the tax rate to fund. The, the uh, additional monies needed for the fire EMS services would be about ninety-five cents per one thousand dollars of value. So you take that. Rate multiplied by the two seventy-four, again, because it's per thousand dollars of value. So that's why you're only multiplying by the two seventy-four. So the average home would see an adjustment on their twenty twenty-five tax bill under this proposal. Of two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents for the year. That is above and beyond. What we levy as part of our standard budgeting process. And then breaking it out across the other stakeholder communities as well in a similar fashion. There is a nuance here that I want to call out and I think it's important that I speak to it. The village of Sockville, as you note, that their amount for a tax adjustment is considerably lower. And that really speaks to their commitment, very recent commitment to upticking funding and support into the. Uh, their fire department operations. Um, that said, that amount in the coming years. Will change drastically because of that equalized valuation aspect of the cost share. Because that population aspect of the cost share. They have a huge west side, single-family resident or residential development being. Uh, multifamily phasing back into single-family and they have the huge gateway. Um, project, land use development project going on as well. So all of that carries significant equalized value, which will impact their cost share. It will impact their population, which in turn upticks their cost share. And assumedly would uptick the calls for service as well, simply by function of more stuff and the need. Their rises. So I do believe that with good, with good faith, believe that will be adjusted upward in the years to come. But right now, today, that simply reflects their initial um, investment into their department. For the individual townships, I'll just speak to what uh, under this proposal, the town of Grafton. Um, would look at about a two hundred and four, two hundred and five dollar adjustment. And a one hundred and sixty-two dollar adjustment for the town of Sockville. So at the end of the day, um, as I mentioned in my opening comments. The goal here is for the ability to roll ambulances twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. Get an engine out the door twenty-seven, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. And the good part is with that end goal. Um, we, we as a working group had an outside independent entity take a look at this. Thankfully, I had a connection at the UW being the Wisconsin Office of Rural Health. Through the um, UW Systems School of Medicine and Public Health. Um, this gentleman's job is to literally travel statewide and help fired EMS departments with. Any myriad of operational or capital concerns they may have, whether it's licensure for their EMS and paramedic. Um, operations, whether it is uh, referendum prep, whether it is simply operational um, feasibility um, review. That said, I did attach to the um, IFC the letter that uh, I received um, after um, they reviewed. What the uh, working group wa- was looking at as far as a staffing and, and a uh, maximum wage rate. Type of situation. That said, the uh, supervisory system um, did come forward with some good remarks. Um, with regards to captains and lieutenants um, versus an original proposal of six captains. Um, it's a cost savings, but also does provide for that internal growth. Um, did recommend, there was an initial thought of a, a um, larger annual capital um, appropriation. Um, that said, the recommendation from the office uh, through the UW was to dial that back and responsibly manage debt service over time. But maintain a level of those ongoing um, capital contributions. On page two of the letter, it speaks to um. Um, the consideration of the amount necessary to make a request of the voters. Um, in his experience over the um, recent years, um, has noted that the, a kind of a. Um, sweet spot, if you will, or, or where um, the succession, uh, the success rather of a referendum. Really seem to um, um, garner a, a much higher level of success. Was right around that one million dollar mark, one, one point one. Um, that said, as you. Get further away from that million dollar mark, success rates do seem to dip, but. Circumstances do vary among different communities and situations, but with his recent um, observations. Right around that million, million one mark. Um, and as a reminder, the village of Grafton would be looking at. About one point five million under this um, uh, current estimated proposal. That is uh, in front of the board this evening for discussion. Um, then they, then uh, the uh, Office of Rural Health speaks to townships. Um, what tools they may have. As far as the town of Sockville, uh, may not necessarily require a referendum because of their population size. They may be able to do this as part of their budget process. Um, the notion of establishing a fire fee to help offset uh, some of the costs. Um, then it speaks to um, an uptick or an ex- uh, expected uptick. In um, funding that we already receive act one oh two. Um, we have already plugged into our budget and. It is understood that funding for this particular state program has um, been expanded. And then with the notion of consolidation as well, this could be additional revenue we recognize and something. This could be additional revenue we recognize and something for us to keep in mind. It is not built into the projections here. Because we want to be very conservative with um our thought process on that. And then speaking to the maintenance of effort under act twelve, um as you recall, part of our two thousand and twenty four budget. We divvied out act twelve state shared revenue dollars um in accord with the um restrictions set forth in the legislature being. Uh public works, transportation, dispatch, police, fire, EMS. That said. Um there are, there were some um concerns out there with regards to um losing money. Under act twelve, that would not be the case. Act twelve specifically says that you need to support at a certain level and that support would be. Uh maintained or exceeded um moving forward with regards to a consolidated fire department. So there are no ill effects. Uh to our act twelve state shared revenue allocation. Um so long story short. Excellent informational piece from the um uh Office of Rural Health. Basically. We're moving in the right direction as a working group and pleased with that. Um but it does give some uh significant things to consider. Um so with that, um walk, having walked through all of that, um. I have no formal action requested of the village board this evening, rather, I'm asking for feedback that myself. President Delore and trustee love can take back to the working group with Sockville to continue to refine this. So looking out kind of a timetable wise. Want to get back in front of the village board in December with some uh further refined numbers and figures. Um because we will need to approve a referendum question in order to have it submitted by the state or to the state rather. Uh but I believe it's January twentieth or twenty first. So there's time there, but there's holidays. And whatnot, so we want to keep this ball moving. So hence, I'm here this evening with this myriad of information. And I'm happy to answer questions and looking for feedback.
Uh yeah, a lot of information. I think uh most of us have had a can't. Does say, you know, me and I have been pretty much living nuts over the last couple of weeks as well in Chief Rice. We've been living with this uh. Uh quite, quite significantly. Um it, you know, there. Interestingly enough, um I've had some comments from the towns uh as soon as they saw this posted. Um very concerned with the cost, but I guess. As we look here from a, on the village board, we kind of want to know. At that. Two hundred and sixty nine dollars per um the staffing, the staffing model, two hundred and sixty nine dollars per average house. Um you know, there are, there are three things we can do here. We can go ahead with it at the current. We can make a recommendation to, to increase or decrease it, um or we can just decide that, you know, everything's working well right now. And uh we decided that we don't want to go ahead with the referendum. The challenge is, Grafton is that linchpin. You don't do something here, uh the whole thing is uh, I, I know the town won't do anything, and I know Sockville. Uh Sockville doesn't have to go to referendum.
Uh as it sits right now, there is a very good chance that they will not. They have um financial um abilities within their structure. That they believe they may not have to at this point.
Sure, and uh I believe the town of Grafton would, from what I've seen uh and from what I'm hearing from uh chairman Bartell. So uh again, just thoughts, ideas, where we're coming from here. And. But what, let me go to Dave. Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
I think that uh one point five million number is just going to be a hard pill to swallow for the village of Grafton voters. Um. Man, that you see that number and that's just the big number and then the letter that we received. Even point set up, anything over a million dollars really. You know, it's a tough one to pass. Um so I think that they say, I just struggle with that number. And they, they still base that. Number that large would be get passed on the referendum.
I think another thing to consider here as well is at our last um village school liaison meeting, um the school did. Um um put forth their intention to go for referendum. Um in spring as well for um in addition to John Long Middle School and transition that. To a five eight uh grade level um building. Uh as I recall, they were in the neighborhood of about ten to ten point five million dollar. With regards to their initial forecast of a referendum ask. So just making sure the board is aware of that. As far as context with regards to the overall conversation as well.
Jesse, can you just speak a little bit on what you know that our neighbors might be doing? Like if we don't do referendum or we don't go for the salary month. Leave yourself because our neighbors are going to be doing something.
Excuse me, um I understand um the city of Cedarburg is going to be going for a referendum to bolster the funding. Uh to bring on more full-time staff. I have not been able to connect with uh the administrator to be able to get what their target. Uh is, um I have left a message, unfortunately, I was not able to connect. Um I have read uh in the paper where um or. Yeah, I believe it was in the newspaper where Port Washington is considering a um referendum as well, but um that. May look at not only staffing, but also facilities um type of items. And again, I don't have a target on that either. So it does appear as though our neighboring communities are gearing up to do um uh referendums as well. And I believe in spring. In theory, yes. Um regardless, I think it is going to be a very competitive market. As it sits right now, I know Chief Rice can speak to the challenges of recruitment, um especially at that paramedic level. Um something the, the work group has been discussing is the notion of may- maybe one of these positions is an EMT versus a paramedic. Um there, there's cost saving and that is built into um that org chart to help with not only that staffing and upward mobility. Um but frankly, it is a very competitive market out there right now um for folks with those skills.
Yeah. So I, I sort of. Agree with you, Dave, uh. That one point five number, in addition, what is the school number going to be? So with both those referendums. On the ballot in the spring. And concern that's going to turn people off. Is there a possibility we could move our referendum to the November election?
We could have our referendum, excuse me. Excuse me, absolutely, that is, that is an option. Pardon me. Um we could have our question on the ballot in April, August, or November. Um that said, um. For budgeting reasons, um and also the fact that, let's play this out, we put this on the April ballot, it's successful. We have to, in the immortal words of Ross from Friends, pivot. And then become be- become um constructors of the governance. Basically, what does that? Memorandum of understanding among all the stakeholders look like? What does that board of directors look like? What are the final pay scales look like as far as we got the maximums? What are the minimums and midpoints? Um. What other logistics as far as uh tax ID numbers, uh health insurance, all of that will need to be obtained. Prior to going live on January one, twenty twenty five. So really, it would be in our best interest to keep that April date. Um because there is a lot of legwork to um take care of. Following a funding uh resolution of the funding question.
Or. Does the April date have less of a chance of passing than one of the other days?
Uh I, I think it's.
Referendums on the ballot.
I, I can't say that. I, I can't answer that, that's up to the voters.
Grandpa to get in, the governing body, the, the government, so that's going to be set up. They have, as Jesse said, things have to be purchased, they have to pass them. Governing body with the past resolution, Wisconsin retirement system, so I mean, there's a lot of labor tasks to be done, so if referendum in November, they would not be. August, it would just be. I'll, I'll kill that with the past, but.
But I think this is a better question to bring back to the, the question, bring back to. Working group to see if that would be recommendation, if that's fair or not. Anything else, Jim? No. Okay, great, go ahead.
Um when we had our school liaison meeting, their backup plan, if. That if their funding doesn't go through, the referendum doesn't pass, they'll bring it. In the next, they'll keep doing it until it passes. The most, so I don't think we delay, I think we do it right of in, in spring. And um I'm comfortable, I like the one point five. You know, a million versus one point five, I don't see a big difference in. Your capital.
Let me tell you that. This are delta tax on the builder of Grafton, the delta tax bill is one seventy five dollars forty seven. One point one million, it would be a hundred and ninety three dollars. At one point two, it would be two hundred and ten. At one point three, it would be two hundred and twenty eight. So, you know, just to give you an idea of funding. If we go out and we ask for one twenty five, we're up to two hundred and sixty per home. If we're out at a million, it's one seventy five forty seven. Um in, in, in that general, that's just by taking the levy number and then um against the assessed value. So we're looking at anywhere from. A million sixty, at a million sixty four cents per um thousand. Uh to one point four at ninety four uh point six six cents per dollar.
So hopefully, if this is what is needed, uncomfortable with this being what is needed, but uh Chief Rice, um. Could you provide a little bit of context about the four positions for each of the days in Grafton? And what that would look like versus a hypothetical scenario where maybe there were only three positions at Grafton, perhaps one of the chief firefighters is not present.
Sure, I think it's important to realize that. This is our best attempt to say this is how we would put each station. First thing you have to do when you look at that staffing is realize that on any given day. Of the, it's one apartment now at two stations. One person will be on vacation almost every single day. So one of those lines goes away. It's now three and two. Now somebody gets sick, bad knee, pregnancy, shoulder, you name it. Uh now it could be two and three. So uh I want to address that, that's the reality of what we're looking at. Uh the, and it's all based on increasing call numbers, which we know are going to go up and decreasing volunteers. Fewer people coming in for those calls. So I don't know if I answered your. Questions directly, is there another part to it that I didn't answer?
No, that largely addresses it. It provides important context for that, because especially the part that you mentioned about the decreasing volunteers, recognizing our. The sicknesses, those vacations, it could be straightforward to think that's what's a paid on call, people would be able to be there. But what I hear you say is that it's, we can't rely on.
Now, and, and we have, I've had this discussion since I started here in two thousand and thirteen with the village board. Warning them that the stay is coming, the stay is coming. And it just, it has proven, I was. I was right in that regard, one thing I was right on. We have seen the calls go way up and the volunteers drop off. So I listened to uh. Trustee Armstrong, you know, and I don't agree or disagree with any, we don't, none of us know, none of us know what is the right to do. But what I am fearful of is, look what the school board. They, they went a little less than they really needed, and here they are, what, three, four years later? They remain the same, they didn't do it right. Now we need more to finish the job. You look, you're torn between trying to do it right. And having to come back two, three, four years later. I, I don't have the right answer, respect all, and you're all right. And this is not necessarily what I wanted, but we worked harder, very, very hard to get to this point. And there's some loose ends, but I'm confident we're going to work through those loose ends. If they were. This was painful to get to the point, but I can support this.
I appreciate that. So the final question then for Jesse for president board would be, what is the current thought is to the message strategy? Trying to sell we a budget on this referendum that we presumably if we go forward with this, whatever the dollar amount is. We believe is necessary.
If, if I may, I'll bet lead off and feel free to fill in if I miss anything. Really, that message revolves around the fact of twenty four seven, three sixty five. We can roll an ambulance too. We can roll an engine. Um there, there's not the um um wait or delay. We can roll. Um that is the message right there. Then, then it really, you know, that's the service level aspect of it. Then you do have to, and I think it's imperative for all of us, I mean, we're all going to be communication agents on this at the end of the day. To really speak to that financial aspect of it, what is it going to mean to an average homeowner? Um to use an analogy that, that came up in a previous conversation, is it going to mean, you know, a Netflix subscription? As far as, you know, an adjustment, a monthly payment adjustment on the tax bill, um is, is it going to be less, is it going to be more? And at the end of the day, it, it really will be upon the voters to really stop and think about. You know, how, how important is it and what can I afford and, and what does it mean to me? But. Our message, I believe, and I, I very strongly believe, has to revolve around. That twenty four seven, three sixty five ability to roll, whether it be EMS or fire.
I, I think this, this is a great point, Jesse, that um. You know, when we look at how we got here. We got here because we don't have volunteers in. There's no doubt that the Grafton Fire Department is the center of Ozaki and the heart of Ozaki during COVID. Without us, be a much different outcome for our community. However, it was really interesting to look at what the Wisconsin policy form said, and that would be for cold, I feel. Like we got a problem. It's there. And that's not on us, that we don't have enough human resources to be able to address the need. The same time we've got a aging population. And I think when we look at twenty one dollars and sixty one cents a month. It really comes down to the end of the pool. Replace that. But the fact is, when you look at twenty one dollars and sixty one cents per month. You get an ambulance to come to your house consistently throughout the town and the village, it's really a deal. But that's the message, we have to get out to the people, that's the message we got to get out there. Now. Chief Rice, I know exactly the ID, been really, really helpful to all of us, because really have a vision of it. Appreciate that. But I think the challenge that we really have here is how we all as a group communicate that. I don't, uh we are certainly looking at a, a PR company that's going to mix along with us, be able to give us a push. To be able to direct mailing, but we've also got to be able to get towns on board. And I can be really honest, I got a stinky call from town of Grafton. Um saying that the dollar amount that we're looking at right now is untenable for them. We have to be careful with this, is our. Center.
That goes hockey, kind of, yeah, coordinated.
So. Think we can ask the question, ultimately, that's on either side, either side, counted aside, it's up to our, it's up to our um. Citizens to decide if that's what they. We don't get it, guess we're going to come back to the drawing board again. That's it, we ask again.
Yes, that's the point I was trying to make, I'd say, no. Saying this isn't what we need to do, it is. I just think that number's going to be hard to attain from the board. Plus, we have a very clear message that's sent to each household out there, this is, this is what the impact is to you. Like you said, Netflix bill, yeah, right. You think in those terms, you know, it's coffee week, whatever that is. But will people break that down? I don't know that they would, that's, that's my concern.
No, and that will be a delicate conversation to have. I mean, I, I would not want to be flipped about it with somebody who's like, oh yeah, just give up your Starbucks and, you know, pay for an ambulance, right? That, that's not the right message to send, but at the same time, being able to draw those common comparisons may help folks with that in the long run. You know, and, and I guess from my mind's eye. Just strictly dollars and cents, nothing else. We're not talking about service, we're not talking about job titles, we're not talking about org charts, just dollars and cents. To me, from a common sense standpoint. Wouldn't it make sense to distance ourselves from that ten point five million dollar target that the school district has as much as we feasibly can? If it means instead of one point five, we ask for one point two. You know what I mean? It, it just shows a little bit extra of, we sharpen our pencil. They came with their ask, right, wrong, or different, they have their data, the background and whatnot, and they have their ask. But look, we're, we're, we're smaller than that, and what can we show that we did sharpen our pencil to come up with that ask? Um so that's, again, dollars and cents, not. Not who's rolling, what ranks, nothing like that, just straight dollars and cents and thinking about getting a question out there that may be successful.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance.
Glad you're fine.
Um, uh, yeah, I have a a couple of comments. Um. I hate to date myself, but you know, for many, many years, for ten years now, this has been a goal. To get advanced. Uh EMS services since Chief Rice came. It's been a it's been hard every year and every step of the way and every budget. Um. I I think that it's it's um it seems simple to me to say we're gonna focus on just the dollar amount. We're gonna say it's only gonna be this much. Because. I think a citizen would be upset. You know that, you know. Their family members only were two hundred and seventy dollars. Let's say that's gonna be there. That's gonna be the endpoint that that they're gonna have to pay in taxes, an additional amount. Um, I I think we need to remember that this is about health and safety. And this is, I think, a pared down model. Um, we're already hearing that, you know, there's gonna be people out, people sick, people on vacation. We're already down. I think I think we almost need to ask for what we really need instead of let's just ask for this and hopefully it it will pass. Um. You know, to just say it's a dollar amount without explaining the importance of advanced EMS paramedic services, I think is, I think we're losing an opportunity. To to be able to stress the importance to the community. It's not just about dollars. It's about safety. It's about getting enough people to your door and your neighbor's door and all these other developments that we're allowing to come into Grafton. They wanna feel like they're safe too. And that means if we're gonna allow development, we've got to allow additional EMS help. Um, it it's too simple to me to say it's this many dollars. And we have been band-aiding this problem for for eight years, ten years, as long as we've started with this. Village owned fire department. I think we need to step up. Maybe we need to ask for two million. I mean, again, I know in the beginning, when I was on the committee, we were starting at the beginning. There was a lot that we didn't know about. I see some of the different recommendations. Um, you know, we can get into that later, the differences between the captains and the lieutenants and things like that, and how that might affect the cost. Um, business manager, looks like that's gonna be in the position. Um, but this is. This is something that we owe the citizens. You know, this is something that it's worth something to our citizens. And now to say that cut back to one point two, where does that mean we cut? I I mean, that was your suggestion, right?
My observation from a fiscal standpoint only, that's.
So, I mean, I don't think we can get less than what we're asking for. And I think that's something that committees. Got into at a point where, because they're trying to be responsible to the taxpayer, say, this is what I think people can pay. I would ask for more. I would agree with what is is um, you know, going to be on the referendum now, but we have to remind people this has value. This is a valuable thing that we provide to you. And I know the town of Grafton appreciates the fact that the village takes care of them. And we would all wanna be able to have some say in what we're paying somebody for a service. So I get that. Um, but Grafton needs us, you know, it'd be hard for them to get service from another community. This is a value to our citizens. I think we need to keep pushing that. It's life-saving. Um, again, I would settle for this, but I would ask for more because I think we need more. Don't we, Chief Rice? This is the this is the bare minimum, I feel like, because we've been loping along at one or two firefighters for. That's my concern.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? I'd like to kind of. Get up to the production at this. Meeting. We're gonna be holding a meeting here very shortly. So I guess there are a couple of things that I'm hearing. First of all. I hear we should spend, you know, perhaps consider more. I hear we should consider less. I hear on. That's what I hear. I hear potentially move this quote. To perhaps August. As as a potential that's out there. Just to. Just to get a general idea here, the one point five million dollar number. Think that is that something we we should do? Just to kind of raise a hand if you're okay with one point five million.
Can I make a comment? It's not that, I mean. I'm okay with it, however. If, I mean, we really need to educate. The village, if we're gonna that, if that's the number we're gonna go.
Okay, so, yes. I think, uh, and and I think that's the the big question we had with Chief Rice. You know, we're we have this dollar amount. We're all got, we all got to be in on this one. And it's just like, we're all in. And if you just listen to Lisa's comments, she's kind of inspiration. And that that's what we're gonna eat out of all of you as we go out to the public, not to the towns. We don't care about them. We care about the village. We care about sideboards, streetlights, and our own police department. We care about those. It's a better place. We're just saying we care about the fire too, together, and I don't care with the towns. It's not about them. That's my. And it's okay. And I think that all these ideas have to come up, but I think we'll sit here and with this this plan we have right now. I think this plan and some of the details that we talked about in our meeting, both for from the villages. Addressing maintenance thing, I think we can overcome those problems. We work really closely together. We can make this program work. To go back any further would be very difficult. Very good. So I hear in on this. Everybody else in on this one forward. Lisa, I see.
So I I would be in on it if I know the final details. If I know all the other things about, you know. Right, right. I was just saying, I would be okay with this, with the other things that.
Well, actually, a best. Be what we think you can get it passed, be like, and let the electorate make the decision. It's not necessarily our decision. See, like, it's. So Lisa, that's, yes, Clark, you're on, Amy. Jim, yeah. So got that right there.
Thank you.
So definitely.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Yep, I'm definitely gonna be back back in front of you guys in December. Yep. Yep.
So this is not.
Yeah, kind of what we're looking at with regards to impact to the average homeowner. I mean, right, that that's kind of where it starts. Because then you're going to explain from there, this is the impact, but these are the services. This is what we're looking to build out, so.
Okay, let's go to.
Certainly, just a couple of things here this evening. Um. In January twenty twenty four, the utility is looking to uh restart or kickstart its residential meter installations um as part of the. Overall water meter replacement program. Um, this has been mired down um over the course of the better part of a year. Um, for over a year, actually, as supply chain has um issues have not been able to come through with a specific. Part that attaches to the meter. So we've had the meters. We just have not had the part to attach to said meters to be able to um really get into the residential units to do these unit uh meter changeovers. So we just got a pallet of those parts, and I'm sorry, I I apologize, I'm dumbing this down. Brecken explained this all to me and. So, long story short, January, um the utility can make a, starting in January, the utility can make a significant push in residential meter changeouts. Because we now have all the parts and pieces needed um for those installations. Um, the library recently had an outreach event at Village Point Commons. Uh, the successful event resulted in forty items being circulated and several new library cards being issued. So it was a really neat outreach effort uh by the library um over at Village Point Commons, which is a senior living facility um and assisted facility. Uh, the village clerk recently recently completed a multi-day webinar. Regarding the twenty twenty four presidential election and all of the facets that surround that with regards to rules, regulations, expectations, et cetera. This is just the start of their preparations um for not only the clerk's office, but all of the election workers as we go into twenty twenty four. So we're gonna have a myriad of elections. Um, we're gonna have the referendums uh potentially out there as well. Um, but obviously, the big one is going to be the presidential in November. We fully anticipate. A room full of folks. We're gonna have observers from both sides of the aisle, independent observers. Um, and so it is going to be a very significantly coordinated effort between our clerk's department, the election workers, and uh police and public works. Um, as they all play a role in this, public works helps to set up the venue, um take down the venue, um helps transport um uh. Uh, stuff for setup, what have you, um but then also public safety plays a role in it as well. Um, and then the clerk's office and all the poll workers uh maintaining the integrity of the process. So. Um, it's gonna be a chore, and this is just the tip of the iceberg, but it's a pretty significant undertaking where it was literally a multi-day webinar. Just focusing on the presidential election for our clerk's office. And so. She did, she did. Um, kudos to her. I I don't know if I would have lived through a multi-day um webinar, but. That said, um, they're they're the whole entire group is passionate about it and will be moving forward accordingly. So those are my update items uh for this evening.
Okay, let's go to operator licenses. I'm looking for a motion to approve the issuance of operator licenses presented. Okay. Good motion and second, any discussion? Take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Vote. That motion carries. We'll move on to. The um appropriate issue, a um. Appropriate issuance of a class B beer and class C wine license to Ben Quest agent from Form and Fitness Health Club. Doing business as Form and Fitness Health Club, twenty twenty Cheyenne Court, Grafton, Wisconsin, five, three, oh, two, four, for period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, subject to dissatisfaction of all financial outstanding financial obligations to the village of Grafton as presented. Uh, any update on this, Jesse?
Uh, just the new um service, if you will, um being provided by Form and Fitness, um. Uh, a unique um service being offered, but that said, just going through the appropriate channels with the clerk's office to attain the appropriate licensure. Um, and then they would have to pay for said licensure, which is the um satisfaction of all obligations. Um, and so. Uh, ma- maybe it's time to join the gym.
Extremely professional.
Yes, sir.
Really hard for me.
Yes, sir.
I would uh take a motion and a second to move this to discussion. Motion and second, Jim, you.
Go over a form of fitness and work out, and then when you're done, you go.
Beer.
The group fitness right into my office now. It it is a working model.
Yes, and having, um, you know, having been in a facility, um, I know there is a seating area. Where you can get a sandwich, you can get smoothies, um other very minimalistic deli. Um, so yeah, I guess if you wanted to work out, then enjoy a beverage post-workout. They 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 wanna be able to provide that opportunity and are willing to pay for a license. I.
Any other? Keeping in mind. Public meeting. That was capitals.
Thanks, sir.
Right, we have a motion.
That's fair.
Carries. Yeah. Motion carries and I will take a. This apartment. Okay. Um, for bills, uh looking for a motion and second on the approval of the. Bills, the bill chief expenditures. We have motion and second. All right, all questions answered. All in favor, say aye. Suppose. Motion. Is approved. No, it's everybody's favorite time to convene a session concerning due state statutes, nineteen twenty eight five, one, G, Wisconsin statutes. Conferring with the legal counsel, governmental out for the governmental body who is rendering oral. Or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Seven B Building and Development LLC versus Grafton, village of Grafton, et al. I need um a motion and a second.
I'll second. Hi.
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 Okay, we're clear to so forth.
And I do not expect any action uh coming out of the closed session. This is uh merely um an informational update um. As to these processes.
Very good. So we will have the uh. Audience cleared at this point.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.